We'll go ahead and call the Monday, December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one School of Board of Education meeting to order, and a roll call, please, Mrs. Haas.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Here.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Here.
Mrs. Bookta?
Here.
Mr. Chaney?
Here. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Each month, we read the vision and mission statement of the district, for that is why we're here, and that's why we're doing what we are doing. Our vision statement is to achieve, we are achieving distinction in all that we do. Our mission statement is to cultivate an inclusive, high-performing culture of growth and community. Moving forward, we will head to the consent agenda, Dr. Abbott.
Yes, Robert's Rules provides for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board in a single motion. Documentation concerning these items had been provided to all board members in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review and will become part of the permanent record. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. This evening, we have item A, minutes from November eighteen, two thousand and twenty-one, regular meeting, and December six, two thousand and twenty-one, special meeting. Item B, nondiscrimination and anti-harassment policy updates. Item C, approval of four K contracts. Item D, school safety drill reports. Item E, emergency operations plan. Item F, personnel. The board will approve the following appointments. Andrew Tubbs, one point O F T E English teacher at Fort Atkinson High School. Also, the following resignation requests effective January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty, be accepted upon satisfaction of liquidated damages for failure to perform in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. Abraham Graziano, one point O F T E technical education teacher at Fort Atkinson High School. Also, the resignation request effective January fourteen, two thousand and twenty-two, be accepted upon satisfaction of liquidated damages for failure to perform in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. David Pazurik, one point O F T E math teacher at Fort Atkinson High School. Be it further resolved, the Board of Education thank Abe Graziano for his seven-and-one-half years, and Dave Pazurik for his ten-and-one-half years of service and dedication to students and the community. Then, item G, the high school course proposal. Item H, approval of Dr. Sperry as authorized signer. Item I, Wisconsin O P E B Trust Annual Review and Report. Item J, gifts to the school district, which includes a donation from Benderkind Stafford Dental of five hundred dollars toward the High School Theater Department Musical, an anonymous donation in the sum of one hundred dollars toward the High School Theater Department Musical, Fort Atkinson boosters and band boosters, a donation of twelve thousand five hundred dollars for fifty students to go on the music department Disney trip. Also, the Ball Corporation, a donation of one thousand dollars to the High School Tech Ed Department for a renovation project, and then the City of Fort Atkinson, a donation of five hundred one dollars and fifty cents for the Junior Palms Program. Then, item K, budget transfers. Item L, payment of district bills and the treasurer's report. And that is the end of the consent agenda items.
Thank you very much, Dr. Abbott. Do any board members have any thing they would like to discuss from the consent agenda? Then we would have to pull it out in motion specifically on that item, but does anybody have any questions or concerns or comments or?
I do not.
Nope.
All right, seeing none, then we have a motion to entertain there.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nickram, and a second by Mrs. Reynolds, and a roll call, please, Mrs. Haas.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds? Yes. Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes.
Mr. Chaney?
Yes.
And that passes. We will move forward to the strategic plan update, referendum survey results, and Dr. Abbott will...
Yes, good evening again. It's my pleasure, as has become customary, to provide an update on our strategic plan. As Mr. Chaney just shared with us, our updated vision and mission certainly are living alive and well in the report that I'll be providing this evening. As the board and the community remembers, we are working with three different goals as part of our new strategic plan. One related to high performance, another to an inclusive culture of growth, and then a third to community distinction. One of our efforts related to our new strategic plan is to more regularly share updates, examples, and areas of focus related to those three main goal areas. Next month, we will be focusing on the goal area of distinction as we celebrate just a few of the successes of our students and staff in a larger district as they've been achieving them over the past few months. This evening, however, I would like to provide our board and larger community with just a glimpse of a few of our efforts related to an inclusive culture of growth, and that goal specifically is our learning community will exemplify an inclusive culture of growth responsive to our learner and community needs. I'm quite sure, at least I know for me, we're all talking about the pandemic, but for some things, it was the catalyst that was needed to push some comments from the someday column to the implement now list. Our teacher leader structure, known as our One Fort Success Teams, were formed in two thousand and twenty, with twenty-six teacher leaders representing each of our learning communities. With a leader from kindergarten through pupil services, art, CTE, and more, we have a teacher leader plugged into each and every one of those professional learning communities throughout the entirety of our school district. While their task was to help develop our original mere learning instructional model, our team has moved on to developing a true way to work together as a team, to problem solve, and to lead their professional learning communities into the future to improve teaching and learning for our students. I'm excited to bring the adaptive schools training, and we started with our One Fort A Team, or the administrative team, last year as we strove to change, improve, unify, and create productive interdependence and collaboration in the governance of our One Fort learning community. Given the constraints of COVID, the typical training format was modified a bit to be fully virtual. Nonetheless, it was great learning and demonstrates our desire to stretch our leadership team then and keep stretching our leadership team as we evolve into the future. But what was most exciting was that we were able to provide four full days of adaptive schools training this last summer for each and every one of our One Fort Success Team teacher leaders. Administrators, we did that critical learning right along with all of our teacher leaders. The goal is to have a consistent framework of learning, leadership, and operations for all leaders in our district to maximize leadership and best leverage our PLC structure to grow our collective efficacy of all of our One Fort educators. In the foundational seminar, that four-day training that we completed together last summer, the training not only explores what makes teams effective, but how to develop skills as facilitators and informed group members in informal as well as formal settings in small and large groups. It takes participants beyond the idea of professional learning communities to the actual implementation, describing specific ways to weave the collaborative fabric of faculty, develop group member skills, and acquire the principles and understandings to engage in continuous cycles of team and individual improvement. Adaptive schools is the how of professional learning communities, how to productively engage groups, how to lead them, and how to facilitate them for improved leading, teaching, and learning. Adaptive schools will continue to be the underpinnings of leadership in the One Fort learning community. I think we should have a goal for quieter refrigeration units, huh? Once I placed it, I was good, Ben. One of the resources our success team leaders, as well as administrators, have been using this year is the Ten Mind Frames for Visible Learning. The mind frames are built on science, or what teaching strategies yield the greatest impact of student learning. Systematically, we began the year with mind frame three, that is, I collaborate with others about my progress and impact, and that relates to the collective efficacy that, if you recall back to the Convocation Launch, that was a very key piece of how we wanted to begin this school year. And now we are shifting to mind frame nine, I build relationships and trust, which leads nicely into our next area related to our inclusive culture of growth goal. Trauma-sensitive training is part of a larger national movement and focus around how we go about providing services to children as well as families. The Wisconsin Mental Health Framework includes trauma-sensitive practices as a universal support for all students and families in key areas, and also how it is connected to regular learning. Trauma-informed care is the parallel and interconnected movement happening in mental health, human services, the medical field, law enforcement, and all across our communities. It brings a diverse system to the table around a common cause and with a common language that truly has the potential to be transformative. Trauma-sensitive schools have become best practice for schools due to the emerging understanding of the high prevalence of trauma and its impact on the developing brain and on academic performance and behavior in the classroom. Consider what happens with little kids who fall and skin their knees. Their parents' reaction has the potential to make a difference in just how hard that hurts and just how long that hurts as well. The same holds true for trauma. Response, resiliency, and support matter, and we recognize trauma when both exposure happens, and that exposure overwhelms and creates difficulty. Trauma-sensitive schools recognize the need for these strategies and supports to be universal and part of what all students receive, but also recognize that some students may need additional supports. To that end, selective staff have been trained in each building and at all levels to serve as trainers for this important work of their colleagues. Beyond that core group, additional staff are receiving that formal training this year, and then that team is providing learning opportunities throughout the school year to other staff members, engaging in independent as well as small group learning each month to grow their understanding and application of the seven essential elements of trauma-sensitive schools. Throughout this process, we are striving to shift our mindset. As that mindset evolves, the process of becoming a more trauma-sensitive, it's trauma-sensitive in our practices will evolve as well. Shifting to another area of continual improvement as we seek to meet the changing student and community needs is our growing catalog and ever-changing course offerings. Our school district continues to develop, hone, and evolve a wide range of course offerings throughout our entire K-12 learning community. Just as our core program is under constant review and change to meet the ever-changing needs of our students and community, so are our college and technical education courses, as evidenced by the Pro Start class that you just approved moments ago. Our investment in instructional technology, in art, in music, in integrated STEAM or science, technology, engineering, art, and math, robust summer offerings, as you recall your report from last month, and other crucial learning areas continue to be of paramount importance as we strive to find a contemporary balance of learning opportunities for our students. And next, as part of an inclusive culture of growth and being responsive to our learner and community needs, is the consideration of facilities and their accessibility, their status, and safety. And I am pleased to introduce Joe Donovan and Perry Hibner of the Donovan Group. Joe is the Donovan Group's founder and president. In addition to working with hundreds of schools and districts in their communication efforts, Joe has advised state superintendents, state legislators, mayors, and members of commerce around the country. Perry works with public schools and districts in Wisconsin and Illinois on surveys, polling, focus groups, and data analysis services as part of the Donovan Group Intelligence. We have worked with the Donovan Group over the past many years as they have demonstrated continued expertise and professionalism. Most recently, they assisted us in our community survey regarding the potential for operational and facilities needs along with possible solutions. And I am very pleased to hand over the presentation to Joe, who will lead us through some survey results.
Well, thank you for that introduction, and thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to work with you tonight. Very grateful for you to be here, and again, I'm joined by my colleague Perry Hibner, who will say a few words a little bit later. And again, I am here to discuss the findings of a recently conducted survey. And so with that in mind, a couple of things that I always like noting, and for those of you who maybe saw my presentation in two thousand and nineteen or before, a couple of years before, some of this is going to be familiar. And the first thing I just want to note, board members, is that the way that we collect data is based on what's called a convenience sample. It's different than polling. We don't do polling and use a scientific sample. Essentially, we want everyone in the district community to participate in the survey. We don't just do sampling. We want everyone to participate. And as you're going to see in a moment, board members, what we do is we disaggregate the data into different groups to ensure that we have, you know, enough people participating in the survey as I go along. So, we're not going to calculate error. We haven't run regression. That said, how I like to look at this is if we sat down with coffee with a large number of your community members. And so, we had nine hundred and ninety-eight people participate in this survey. So what that means for us is that they started the survey, they, you know, took all of the required questions, and they hit submit. In some cases, we do have people who start a survey, they get busy, and then they come back to it. That happens actually quite a bit. But again, here, we had nine hundred and ninety-eight people take the survey. Now, board members, the other thing that I'm going to talk about here, which is the separate set of numbers that we like to use, and again, this is similar to the way that we reported this the last time that I stood before you, is that we have a group called a comparison group. So again, we had nine hundred and ninety-eight people complete the survey. That always includes a large number of parents, just as we would imagine. The comparison group only represents its non-parents, non-students, non-employees. Okay? And the question is, why do we do that? Well, what we've learned after doing this for a long time is that when we provide school surveys to parents, and especially if we talk about things that, you know, involve a referendum, parents, and I'm a parent of two high school-age students, I may be more likely to support a referendum as a result of the fact that I'm very close to my children's school. Whereas, my eighty-six-year-old mother, who hasn't had a child in schools for a very long time, may be less connected, right? Now, what we often tend to find, that people like my mom tend to vote in higher numbers in many communities, people who don't have a connection in the school district can be seventy, seventy-five, eighty percent. So we like to present these numbers so that we have a better case. We kind of have two, you know, two ends of the spectrum. So as we go through this, I'm going to talk about the all respondent group, and I'm also going to talk about the comparison group. Once we get to the point where we talk about some specifics, we tend to find that that comparison group tends to be less supportive of a referendum. So that's just something that you should know. Now, with that in mind, I just want to start with something that I want you to be, this is a true point of pride. Perry and I were actually talking here before we got started, and what we're seeing really across the board, we do an awful lot of surveys, is that one of the, one of the things that we've seen as a result of COVID is that survey participation generally is down. We've just seen that it's down across the board, in some cases, pretty significantly. We're doing some work with the school district, and their survey participation is down almost twenty percent. Yours, on the other hand, is up significantly. So again, nine hundred and ninety-eight total respondents this time. When I stood before you in two thousand and nineteen, we had five hundred and fifty-four, so significantly more. And, again, I talked about that comparison group a few moments ago, three hundred and twenty. In two thousand and nineteen, that comparison group was one hundred and eighty-four. So that's, again, a point of pride, and I would say that the district worked very hard to get those numbers. So with that, let's look at some of the results. So, board members, what I'm going to do is I'm going to, I'm not going to go through all of the questions of the survey, I'm going to go through kind of the main questions as it relates to kind of the key issues here. What's different with the survey that I'm going to talk about here today is that in years past, we only focused on the operational parts. With this survey, we did both the operational parts and the facilities. So we're going to talk about operations first, then we're going to talk about facilities. Before I go on, I would be kicking myself as I leave here if I didn't mention just how grateful I am, and I know that this is true of Perry as well, for working with your team. This is a lot of work. Our work is easy, putting this together, a tremendous amount of work for your district admin team to do the kind of complex survey that we did, to get the numbers and to assemble these things, and so just want to thank them for that. So, board members, what I'm going to do here, the data that you have before you are, again, are some of the questions. You're going to see that we break this down by the all respondent group, and also with the comparison group. All respondent group, I should say, the comparison group only are non-parents, non-employees, non-students, okay? So, the other thing that I'm going to do is I'm going to combine strongly agree, and I'm going to combine, I'm sorry, strongly agree and agree, and I'm going to combine disagree and strongly disagree. Usually, and the reason we do this is that tends to be how referendum results break down. So we would tend to find that if someone walked into the voting booth and they disagreed, they would typically vote no, versus if they agreed, they would vote yes. So to simplify things, I'm going to talk about combining these two items. So, this first item, I believe the district's most urgent financial needs must be addressed now. Board members, you'll recall in the survey, before respondents had an opportunity to answer this question, we provided some background on the district's finances. Here, we provided some background, high-level background on school finance, we provided some history going back in the district's use of an operational referendum. And again, ended this by saying, the board continues working to balance the tradition of the school district against constantly changing financial times and strategic improvements to meet students' needs and desires of the community. So, after we presented that information, and again, with the focus on operations, seventy-five percent of our all respondent group strongly agreed or agreed versus fifty-four, I'm sorry, fifty-eight point four percent. And I'm going to buzz through these pretty quickly, we'll have time for questions at the end. The next question is, how likely are you to support an operational referendum on the November two thousand and twenty-two ballot? For our all respondent group, support in the form of strongly agree or agree, sixty-nine percent. For our all respondent group, for our comparison group, just over fifty percent. At this point, we start going into both the dollar amount that we're looking to, that the board could potentially seek to raise the revenue limit, and the impact in terms of the dollar amount on taxes. And so here, we use something that was very similar to what we had used before. You see, this is a little bit different than what we used for our facilities question, but you're going to see, when we asked this question with the kind of breakdown that we had, we had fifty-nine percent of all respondents saying that they definitely would support it or probably support it, compared with forty-three point one for the comparison group. Similar question. Now we have one hundred dollars of impact. That earlier question was fifty dollars of impact. At one hundred dollars of impact, our all respondent group for support, forty-five percent, compared to our comparison group, twenty-eight point eight percent. Going to see the numbers go down as the dollar amounts go up. Here, we have one hundred and fifty dollars per year for an operational question. Support goes to thirty-two point four percent, so drops about thirteen points, for your all respondent group, compared to twenty point three for the comparison group. You'll note here that not only are people not supporting it at higher numbers, but we're seeing definitely not support go up as well. Again, these questions are very similar to those that we asked last time. At this point in the survey, we made a transition to the facilities. And toward that end, in the same way that we provided some background for the operational question, we did something similar for the facilities question. Here, we talk about in two thousand and nineteen, the district commissioned a facilities study, and we outlined at a very high level, we didn't go into a tremendous amount of detail for fear that we would, you know, lose people during a long survey if we were to do so, but we just provided some background on the district's facility needs. And the question is one that we ask often for this type of survey. It's, I believe the district's facility needs must be addressed now, in a traditional Likert score-type question. Again, I'm going to combine strongly and agree and agree, and seventy-three point six percent of all respondents indicated that they strongly agreed or agreed, compared to fifty-six point seven percent of our comparison group. So your majority of your respondents are indicating that they want you to address the needs, or that they feel the facility needs should be addressed now. Next, we asked some more or less standalone questions after talking about the nineteen-eleven facility. We asked, I would vote yes on a referendum question to build a new middle school to replace the current one, again, originally built in nineteen-eleven. Sixty-two point one percent of all respondents supported that versus about forty percent, forty point one percent for the comparison group. Next, I would vote yes on a referendum question that also includes safety and security needs, such as secure entrances at all district buildings. All respondent group, seventy-six point six percent versus our comparison group, sixty-four point two percent. Next, I would vote yes on a referendum question that also includes urgent maintenance at all four district elementary schools. Our all respondent group, seventy-five point seven percent support, compared with sixty-one point six percent for our comparison group. Next up, I would vote yes on a referendum question to address phase two, and I should preface this, and I won't go into a lot of detail here, but we provided some background on some different potential options, high-level, but provided enough information for some different items. I would vote yes on a referendum question to address phase two, building a new middle school, secure entrances at all district buildings, and urgent maintenance at elementary schools. Board members, I'll just note here, we are asking this question without indicating cost. You're going to see that we include cost a little bit later. For this question, we had sixty-one point two percent for our all respondent group versus forty-two point two percent for our comparison group. Next, I would vote yes on a referendum question to build a new middle school only, fifty-five point five percent for our all respondent group, compared to about sixty, thirty-six percent for our comparison group. 55.5% for our all respondent group, compared to about 36% for our comparison group. Next, "I would vote yes on a referendum question to build a new middle school and address secured entrances at all district buildings." Our all respondent group, about 60% versus about 41% for our comparison group. Went up about five points. Next, "I would vote yes on a referendum question to build a new middle school and address urgent maintenance at the four elementary schools." 61.5% for our all respondent group, compared with 41.9% for our comparison group. So at this point, Board members, we've provided some backgrounds on the needs. We've outlined at a high level some different solutions. Now we get into some specific questions, okay? Starting with, "I would vote yes on a $40 million capital investment question, having a tax impact of $100 per year on each $100,000 of assessed property based on the information provided." Here, I'll note that we tried to keep these questions similar, consistent to some of the questions, again, that we asked before. For our all respondent group, 62.4% support versus 42.7% for our comparison group. Next question, very similar, the dollars are different. This is $50 million at $134 per each $100,000 of assessed property value. All respondent group, 51.7% support, compared with 31.5% support. Continuing here, "We increase the number to a $60 million capital investment question, having a tax impact of $167." We continue to see support decline. For our all respondent group, 42.3% compared with 22.4%. So again, a couple of takeaways, and I will turn things over to Marissa in just a second to talk about some other steps and other things that we're doing here in a second. Very high participation rate. And high participation rate even if it was a situation where we would see high participation rate, which, as I mentioned, we're not. We're seeing things trend down. That indicates a willingness for people to engage with you at a very high level, including, I will mention, a large, you know, a relatively large number of people, again, who don't have children currently in the school district. So that suggests, again, a high level of engagement. With that, Marissa, do you want to say a few words about next steps? Actually, before I do that, Perry, I'm sorry, Marissa. Perry, did you want to say anything else before we turn things over to Marissa?
I would say that Dad, we actually really need to help inform how women can work. I think that's important. You know, it's easy to look at these numbers and say, it's easy to choose good numbers, and there's some numbers that say you could be better. But the reality is that there's a lot of time between now and November 25th. That's my way to say that those next steps will be, help us work.
Thank you, both. So, yes, so please don't get discouraged. I see this as a great opportunity for us. Our community is willing to engage with us and give us some information. And so I think we have a lot of opportunity. We're about a year out, so people are willing to talk. So in addition, we will be getting some more financial information as, you know, tax bills are coming up and we're figuring out our budget cycle. So I'm working on an extensive communication plan with our team as far as additional community engagement opportunities throughout January, February, March, and April. So focus groups to community conversations, PTO meetings, conferences. So we'll be a little bit of everywhere. So I'd be happy to talk through that plan in further detail if you guys would like. But I think this is a great opportunity, and it was certainly a pleasure to work with the Donovan group again. I think it was a great process, and I was really happy with how many people responded to our survey. Do you guys have any questions for us regarding the survey?
I like to hear the fact that it sounds like that there is some positive to that, because those numbers do look a little weird, considering, I think, you guys have done these surveys for us in the past, and we've had, you know, different numbers. I think that it's indicative of kind of the climate that we're in and the kind of the place that we're at now. So, I mean, when I saw these for the first look, I was a little bit taken aback, but I like the way that you guys have kind of couched it and made us feel a little more comfortable and that these are not shocking, you know? I'm completely confident in the district's ability to communicate our plan. So, I mean, I guess I was just kind of like speaking to the board, maybe, and maybe some of the people in the audience that like... I think, given where we're at in the climate that we're in, that's, those numbers are not as icky as they might look at first glance.
And if I could just jump in on that, we are seeing, we call it turbulence. We are seeing a lot of turbulence in the world, right? Maybe that's an understatement. And where we have done work with districts, in a lot of cases, we're very fortunate to work with districts over many years. And I can't tell you that I've seen numbers up significantly from district to district. So again, one of the takeaways here, and I'm glad, and I should have added, that you're very early in the process. And not only are you early in the process, but a tremendous amount of great work has been done to date. So that's something I think to feel very good about. The other piece that I'll just remind you that, you know, I often think that the community conversation around both an operational and a facilities quite, you know, needs are related to, you know, needs, process, and solution. Board members, you didn't wake up this morning and say, "I can't wait to go to referendum." You go to referendum because you need to, right? And you've defined the needs, you've gone to your community, you've been able to have essentially 1,000 conversations with community members. And they've told you, or at least 75% of those people have said that they've strongly agreed or agreed with the question, "Our most urgent financial needs must be addressed now," and "Our facility needs must be addressed now." They're telling you that, you know, they're asking you to solve, you know, the needs that you have. Again, you have plenty of time to figure that out and to move forward, and you have a great start already.
I have one quick question for you. I know, you know, people want you to say, like, "This is going to be like this, and you can't do that." There's a lot of uncertainty about what you do. But I would assume that if you see a number approaching 50% in the, in the, what do you want to call it? The comparison group? That's probably good, right? Is there, like, I mean, you gotta, I'm sure you have to look at the percentages, but what, is 50% the confidence number, or is it somewhere in the 40s? Like, when you're trying to figure out, like, what level to go after, what's your biggest indicator of those two groups? Of when you can start being more confident in what you want to ask?
You know, that's a great question, and I'm not going to answer it. I'm not going to give you a lot of satisfaction, I don't think, with the answer, just because there are so many variables. Again, if this was a situation where the district was voting, you know, soon to put a question on the ballot, we would look at a comparison group number in particular. And we, you know, if we saw a very, very low number, we saw 15% support, that would be very bad news. 50%, 55%, I think are very solid numbers. But I can tell you that the other piece of this is that I think that numbers change relatively quickly. None of us can forecast the future. But again, I think that the high numbers related to your community telling you, "Address these needs now," you know, outlines the work ahead. But in terms of looking at a number, you know, a year out, I don't know that I'm able to say, other than, I don't know that I was terribly surprised by these numbers considering just the turbulence and where things are. Other than to say I was surprised and happily surprised that participation rate was as high as it was.
I believe you referenced earlier that we had about 320 surveys taken from that comparable group. Is that, do you think that's an accurate representation enough to get like a pretty good feel on where those comparables are at?
Yeah, absolutely. So in terms of just kind of the methodology behind that, we always want to have, for districts large and small, we always want that number to be above 100.
Okay.
So I will tell you that we've looked, we've sliced and diced this data and disaggregated it, and we're always looking for the stories that the data is trying to tell us. One of the things that we're looking at with that comparison group is, are there significant differences in terms of, you know, the different groups that make up that comparison group? The answer is not really. And so, matter of fact, you know, even if we were, even if that was about 100, even if we would have taken about the first 100 people who participated in the survey, it did, the needle did not change very much after those came in. So I would say that this is a very, this is a good respondent pool, and I think a well-earned respondent pool.
It seemed like the comparison group percentages went up as you added stuff to the list of things, which I think it seemed to point towards that they were more in favor of the secure entrances and the urgent, you know, their numbers went up when you said, "New middle school plus this, plus that," which seems to point towards, they're not so much in favor of the middle school as they are in the other things, right?
Yeah, I think it's interesting. One of the things that we see when, again, we ask the question, "Should these needs be addressed?", that was a clear yes. And then we ask people to respond to different solutions, right, as you indicated. And then we say, "Okay, now let's add a dollar amount to it," right? And I will tell you that, generally speaking, we're seeing now a good amount. There's always a good amount of sensitivity around cost, right, just as we would expect. I will tell you, in our work across the board, we're seeing a lot of cost sensitivity to that as well. So that does kind of, that does kind of temper, in some ways, some of the items as well. Perry, did you want to add anything to that item?
One of the things we talked about continuing to check the survey close is that one of the challenges with this is it's hard to know exactly, not only the comparison group, but also the all respondent, particularly the families, if they're making some assumptions. So for example, if I was taking that survey, I would assume that the most expensive facility part of that is going to be going to school, which is going to be more than the security upgrades or maintenance here, the most urgent maintenance. So did some people then as a result sort of say, "Well, I can afford A and B, but not C." We, again, that's one thing that we can't do with the survey is to sort of draw those conclusions. But like Joe said, I think what's most promising is the fact your community, not only your families, which you expect to support facility and operational needs, but your community says they do as well. Now the work to be done is to figure out where that threshold is and what those solutions will be.
Did you see, looking back, and this is maybe putting you on the spot a little bit here, but any trends, like from our 2019 survey till today, where the, was the comparables or the, just the general public more in favor of some particular things than they were, maybe weren't two years ago?
Yeah, I can speak to that. Perry, certainly welcome your thoughts on this as well. I will tell you, I think, considering everything that we've gone through the last however many years it's been, it's difficult to make comparisons. There are just so many changes now. So I don't know, you know, we compared the data, and it's difficult, it really is kind of difficult to do that considering, I think, all of, not only the turbulence that we just have now, but also what everyone has been through. And we are seeing, we're not seeing it here, everything just, everything lined up here. But, you know, in other surveys, in some cases, we see some things that kind of don't make sense, right? In the surveys. And this isn't the first time. I did some survey work back in 2008 during the economic downturn. And that was also a time when tremendous amount of turbulence, and it wasn't always linear in terms of what we saw. But, so I'm nervous making too many comparisons with that. Again, thank you, Board members. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Donovan.
If I could, just as we bring this portion to a close, I mean, I think we also need to put into context, this survey was one piece of information gathering. It was not intended to be a decision-making tool. And that's also why we placed it as early in a very lengthy and robust information gathering process. So this helps us. And I don't think it's about having numbers that we necessarily like or dislike. It's information that's authentic and is real information coming from real people who will be working with us over the course of the next several months to help us figure out what it is that we want to do moving forward. And I would much rather take a survey that we have confidence in, that we have a little skepticism in from some of the respondents as well, because I think that will better inform you and better inform us as we approach the community with options that they don't just view as palatable, but as meaningful in addressing our needs. And that's really what this process is set out to do. So you'll see us, after the holidays, move forward with a very aggressive communications plan, not from a position of convincing, but from a position of continuing to gather information, to hear from people and to interact with people, and talk a little bit more fully about what the district needs are from a fiscal point of view, as well as from a building point of view. And the hope, then, Board, as you know, is heading into late spring, early summer, I mean, coming to terms in what, if anything, would we be moving for into the next election cycle. And we'll have a lot to learn together as we move into those next pieces as well. So again, thank you, Joe and Perry. Thank you very much, Marissa as well. And, and Board, again, if you have any questions, you know, a copy of the full report is in the Board packet the community can access as well. What you got this evening were certainly highlights. But that report is very rich and deep, and you'll see that there are many more and more questions, as well as some analysis for people to consider as well.
Thank you very much, Dr. Abbott. Is there any further discussion about the strategic plan update from the Board? All right, seeing none, then we can go ahead and move forward to the middle school pool condition and future operations.
Yes, a pool condition assessment was conducted in November of 2018 that produced a report on what immediate conditional items needed to be addressed to keep our middle school pool operational, but more importantly, safe for use as well as continued maintenance. Comparison of observations between the 2018 and 2017 condition assessments indicated that there had been an increase in the extent of distress and deterioration in the concrete structure. Based on observed conditions, it was their opinion that an immediate shoring or stabilization was not required. However, in order to maintain the long-term structural integrity and service life of the concrete structure, repairs would be, to be, would need to be required in the future. At that time, they broke these repairs into priority one, or immediate repairs, and then priority two, repairs that would need to be completed in 12 to 18 months from the date of the report, of which there were many items included. These priority one and two items were addressed and repaired in the December of 2018. On September 7th, 2021, a new complete inspection was conducted with the same engineer and construction firm yielding worsening results, even in spaces that had been previously repaired in late of 2018. The report, again, broke recommendation of repairs into immediate priorities, as well as repairs that would need to occur over the next six to 12 months to keep the pool operational and safe or for use of, or for use in required maintenance in and around the pool. The list of issues was far greater this time around flooding in the crawl space, constant water leakage, corroded rebar, and falling concrete in the crawl space from water damage as well. CG Schmidt priced out the repairs necessary to operate the pool for another 12-month year, a total coming in at just over $200,000, with an additional recommendation that added around $33,000 to that cost as well. Now, I'd like to be very clear. These repairs are not due to a lack of routine maintenance. Now, I'd like to be very clear, these repairs are not due to a lack of routine maintenance or service scheduling. And believe me, I can attest, having worked at that middle school for better than 22 years, that the district has taken great care and spared little expense in maintaining the pool properly, including regular inspections, certified service personnel, and responses to any recommendations that have been provided over the years. These repairs have nothing to do with any potential future referendum, it's not about deferred maintenance, and it's not a plan to demonstrate deterioration at Fort Atkinson Middle School. What we are looking at is a rapidly deteriorating structural issue, leading to increased questions of our students and our public's safety. And I have a series of pictures here that are contained in the reports that are, again, in the board packet. These are pictures directly from the reports from the engineers that worked through both 2017, 18, and again, in 2021. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time here, I'm not sure any of us need a ton of narrative here. What you're looking at is fallen concrete, rusting rebar, you know, clearly some issues with, with integrity. There is a fair amount of water leakage from the pool structure itself, as well as within the crawl spaces down below the pool, which are necessary for effective operation of that pool. So again, many of these pictures are similar. This is from 2018, these last pictures I've been showing you. Here is one that I remember discovering one morning in 2018, and then it quickly turned into this issue within a period of weeks or months. So there's definitely some things happening there, and thus the frequency of the, the complete inspection process and the recommendations that we've been getting. And again, throughout the years, it's been, how is it that we maintain and keep this pool as operational and as safe as possible? So here you can see some pictures from earlier this fall of 2021, without toggling back and forth, I think you can get a sense even with those repairs that were completed to standard in 2018, things are, are not improving in that structure. Here you can see, again, deterioration of rebar and concrete.
Once that rebar gets wet, it's a big wick, and it just draws that water in, and it expands, and it cracks. I mean, it's, I wish I could just shut down my pool, but unfortunately, I have to keep it open. But, I mean, there is a real benefit to like not having to maintain this, you know, as awful as it sounds, it is something that needs to be maintained, and it's not viable to maintain it.
It is difficult to consider taking a service that, that some in our community, in our district have become accustomed to in the decades that that pool has existed, certainly. But again, going back to the front of my report, this isn't $230,000 to fix it, this is $230,000 to get through the next 12 months. And I think, you know, that is a pretty difficult number to consider, given that the pool doesn't have a significant amount of community or district use, unlike, say, the high school pool, which is, I think, used about every millisecond of every day. Nonetheless, it certainly is a loss, but you're looking at $230,000 over the course of the next year, of which additional repairs would then be required. This does not make that pool literally whole in any way, shape, or form. So unfortunately, due to the current conditional state of the middle school pool and the future of the facility, as well as the $230,000 plus it would take to make the pool safe and operational for just the next 12 months, it is our recommendation that the pool be shut down and all internal and external programming cease as soon as operationally feasible. And again, we certainly do not come to you with a light heart on this. There's a lot of history here, there's a lot of people's experiences, and a lot of community good that's been had with this facility as well. Quite honestly, it is no longer a facility that we can afford to maintain, or that we can continue to feel good about the level of safety and integrity structurally there. Be happy to answer any questions if you have. Josh Carter, our director of buildings and grounds, is here. He certainly can answer any questions that you might have as well. This is a topic that we talked about as part of the facilities advisory group. If you were a part of that group, it came up several different times as we worked through the compendium of district maintenance needs and issues. This was an area of focus there as well. Also, when the facilities advisory group did building tours, not very many of them were wanting to be in the crawl space, but we did get a couple of people down there to sort of see firsthand what was happening there as well. So I, I think there's a significant lever, level of due diligence here.
I have a question. How long has that pool been operating?
Let's find out.
So I know in the report a little earlier, the, the original central part of the building has been there since 1911, but the pool itself has, was built in 1951. So I don't know how many of you folks know of other pools out there from 1951 still operating, but we sure did a lot to, you know, keep it going this long.
Yeah, I was going to ask you, did they have a useful lifespan estimate back in 1951, or did they just pour concrete?
Forty years.
Yeah, I mean, at, at that time, I, I couldn't tell you, obviously, it's way before even I was a thought in anyone's existence, but, yeah.
It took 20 years.
I would say at least even by the 80s, because I think we have some, some reports going back to the 80s of a lot of work that they did at that time to get it operational and prolong it again another 15, 20 years out. But even in the original engineer report from 2018 into 2019, at that time, they were saying 230 to up to four, up to $400,000 to get not, get beyond just the urgent needs, but obviously to repair all the stuff that would come after that in the next, you know, five to 10 years out.
I, I would contend that, given the level of maintenance and care that that facility has been given by our local, as well as professional crews over the years, has allowed that facility to be open as long as it has. I think had we not taken the care that we had and the boards in the past supported the, the money that was required at that point to keep things going in the right direction for as long as we could, is, is how we squeaked another decade or so out of that as well. We'd be happy to answer any other questions that you might have. If this is an item that you would consider, then I do have a potential resolution for you in board docs, or would be happy to take any version of that if need be.
I remember being in the pool for the first time for the, during the FAC, and I was, I was surprised then by the condition. And, you know, imagine, you know, dumping 230 or so thousand dollars into something that, when I walked in, I, the first time I'd been in there in my life, and I immediately felt like uneasy and unsafe just being in there at that time, and I'm sure, obviously, it was safe at that time, but, so, putting another $230,000, I think, is just fiscally kicking this can down the road at our taxpayers' expense. That just doesn't seem responsible at this point.
Good point.
What is the current use of the pool now?
It does have some instructional use by middle school physical education. There is a, a unit in two of the grade levels. It does get used for a few different middle school events throughout the year. There typically is a winter session of swim lessons that are available to community members at cost. I mean, it's not a district-funded set of lessons necessarily. And then it does have some water recreation use from a group early in the morning. So while that list seems lengthy, when you look at the amount of time the water is actually used versus not, it certainly does displace use, which is never easy or popular, but the facility is, is quiet the vast majority of the time.
Okay.
And I don't know if this information helps kind of put things into perspective, too, but those are the repair costs. We spend almost close to $5,000 a month to operate it, and that's not including custodial time, that's chemicals, utility, and we're talking about a pool that's smaller than a high school pool, and it costs more than a typical high school pool. It's not a competition pool, it's not, you know, the right recommendations for depth and length and that kind of stuff, so.
That's good bit of information, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Mr. Carter.
Can I ask an unrelated question, Josh?
Sure.
After the repairs were made on the high school pool, you've had a little bit of time to operate that, is that, is everything working the way it should, and are you already seeing the benefits of all that?
So we're almost complete with the new filtration system, so we actually just had our two new boilers installed. We're working on getting our, our solar on the roof, working at 100% with the new system.
Okay.
Switching from a glycol to a hot water system, so we're looking at that right now. But yeah, so far, it's been night and day different. I mean, it is how a pool should be operating. If you remember, previously, we were running off of six residential filters, and quite a few nominees that were happening in there. So we have everything, and then also, too, in the spring, we have our air handlers coming out that will be operating in conjunction with the pool filtration system. So still a bit of work yet to be done, but so far, so good.
Yeah, for me, it's looking at the concrete. I just keep picturing, you know, like, I don't want to be one of those schools where something disastrous happens, and then, you know, we're looking at being all over the news and that type of thing for not listening to the recommendations of people that do this for a living.
I guess just for your information, the, the resolution you could consider says until, you know, it could feasibly be shut down, we're probably looking toward the end of, of January by way of process, and also getting a little bit of time for some use that was planned in between, so.
Okay.
I'm good with motion here, if we guys are...
Yeah.
Is there any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Thank you. Be resolved that the pool at Fort Atkinson Middle School be closed indefinitely as soon as operationally feasible.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Nicarum, a second by Mrs. Reynolds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? All right, and that passes. Moving forward, we will now look at a date to conduct the superintendent's evaluation.
Yes, it's that time of the year. So if you are wanting to connect that to the regular board meeting, it would either be before or after January. As you recalled, the January board meeting was moved in order to accommodate the state school board convention, so that regular meeting will take place now on Monday, January 17th. And then your regular February meeting is Thursday, February 17th. Certainly doesn't need to be attached to that. In the past, sometimes people prefer that, and other times, they prefer to, to have a, a separate meeting for that occasion.
What do we think, board?
I would be cool if either, I'd rather do it after the meeting, since we're already here, unless somebody else has a problem with that. Do you have anything big planned for either of those meetings that's going to make them...
I was just going to say, how long are those board meetings going to be?
First of all, I'd like to say that the length of meetings is often up to you.
Yeah, it's, I mean, I was just going to say, it's like, how many questions do you have?
How many reports are going to have?
Kidding aside, we do have some really important business ahead of us. I think that we're starting to see the last couple of months, more consistent bill, meeting length. I think it would be easy enough to accommodate after a regular meeting in either December, or, excuse me, that's this month, either January or February.
Would you like to do your evaluations this month?
Sure. You're ready. You weren't ready, were you?
Does, does anyone from the board have any comment on that, the date, the proposed date?
No. I, I think February 17th would be okay, unless someone would rather go Jan, January, but...
I think the 17th works for me, for February, I guess.
Excellent. All right. All right, well, we can then go ahead and enter, uh, move on to item B, school board election information.
Any resolution on that?
Oh, there's a resolution for that.
I put in a sample resolution.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Be, be it resolved that the semi-annual superintendent evaluation be held on Thursday, February 17th, 2022.
My second.
Uh, motion by Mr. Paul, a second by Mrs. Bookta, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, we'll see you Thursday, February 17th, Dr. Abbott. And we can now go ahead and discuss, our, Mrs. Reynolds has a review of the timelines and the procedure for filing papers for seeking election above Board of Education.
Make sure it's on the right spot. My computer's not working, so I have to borrow. All right, perfect. Can I scroll like that?
Yes.
Okay. An election for school board will be held on Tuesday, April 5th, 2022. The spring election will be for two seats on the school board for a three-year term. The incumbents currently holding these seats are Mark Cheney and Adam Paul. Anyone interested in running for these seats should contact the district superintendent and school of, and Board of Education Administrative Assistant Lisa Haas in the Luther Administration Center at 201 Park Street, or by phone at 920-563-7807, or visit the school district website at www.fortschools.org for more information. Those interested will be given election materials, including an election schedule, WASB guide for candidates, and necessary forms. All of the information and forms are also available on the school district's website. The deadline for filing the ballot access documents, including the declaration of candidacy form and the campaign resi, registration statement is 5:00 PM on Tuesday, January 4th, 2022. The school offices will be closed for the holidays on December 23rd, December 24th, and December 30th, and December 31st, 2021. If more than four candidates file for the two seats, a primary election will be held on Tuesday, February 15th, 2022. The elected board member will take office on Monday, April 25th, 2022.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Reynolds. Moving forward, we can go ahead and discuss the January board meeting.
Uh, yes, so as you recall, the date has been changed, as I mentioned just a moment ago, to Monday, January 17th, in order to accommodate the state school board convention, which currently is still being held in person in Milwaukee. I know several of you have signed up to attend portions of that. Also, the approval of the 2022, 23 school calendar. Then we'll have an open enrollment application alert, approval of open enrollment spaces, the financial projection and budget assumptions for the upcoming year, board policy 8510 as an update, and again, school board election update.
Thank you very much, Dr. Abbott. We, unless there's any discussion about those things for future board meetings, then we have the motion that everybody dreads.
Dreads?
Be it resolved, be it resolved that the Board of Education adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Nicarum, a second by Mrs. Reynolds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you for attending, guys, it's 7:36.